Moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mrs. Bresia.
Here.
Ms. Island.
Here.
Ms. Blin. We have a quorum present.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Spall, that the School Board, the City of Manassas, approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Next up are board committee reports, and I believe we have an academics committee report. Chairman Carl Hollingsworth not here. I'll ask Vice Chair Stevens to step in for him.
Thank you. So, the academic committee met on Tuesday. Let me get back through my notes. To discuss two items, the student code of conduct and the calendar for the 24-25 school year. The calendar for the 24-25 school year needed to be looked at because of additional professional development requirements based on the new legislation under the science of reading. We were given two options to look at, option A and option B, both of which gave additional teacher workdays and protected teacher work time to address the professional development. We, this will come to the full board for a vote in the coming meetings. I believe it'll be on the discussion agenda at the next meeting, and then the following meeting on the consent agenda. And those were the two items we discussed.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda this evening is citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that your comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. And up first, I have Kim Nguyen.
Hi, I'm gonna read from my paper fast to keep with my time. I'm Kim Nguyen, and I've been an involved MCPS parent since 2009. I've served on school committees, district committees, PTO executive boards over the years, many of those with several of you. I have also had the pleasure of being a parent to two children, one who is a recent Osborne graduate and another who is currently an Osborne ninth grader. Both my children participated in the IMS program at Metz. Currently, I am a parent representative on the Advanced Academic Steering Committee. On March 12th, a presentation was given by Dr. Stevenson and Ms. Wesselhoff to this board about the recommendations of that committee. During that presentation, a pathway for IH and IMS at Metz was shared. I was never presented or shown those pathways at a steering committee meeting. I have attended every meeting. I did not see those pathways until the day they were presented to you, when I discovered them in the school board meeting agenda. Had I been presented with those pathways, I would have not have recommended the decoupling of IH and IMS at Metz. I have shared my concerns with Dr. Stevenson and Ms. Wesselhoff as well, and I appreciate they have always been very willing to communicate with me. Because of the age span between my children, I have seen various versions of the IMS program at Metz. Since 2019, the program has evolved into one of the few places I have seen integrated academics in MCPS. As a former teacher, I am aware of all the work that goes into integrating subjects. The teachers of this program have worked to create a program that gives our students integration and hands-on experiences that allow them to learn in ways I have seen nowhere else in MCPS. I could stand here and say all the data that shows this is a successful program, but I'm here as a parent. As a parent, when I see my child, my middle school child, engage and be excited about learning, that is success. When the student is able to explain the mathematical and scientific reasoning behind the creation of a cityscape to scale with reasoning, that is confidence and success. This is a program that works. My child has also been part of the first uncoupling of the IH IMS program at Osborne to integrated honors courses. Courses that three-quarters of the way through the year have shown little to no integration. My child is in five integrated honors courses. I have met with four of the five teachers over the course of the year, and the overwhelming consensus is that there is little to no integration. Rather than focus our energy on reinventing a successful program, I feel as a stakeholder in this district that we need to focus our energy on finishing what we have started at Osborne, creating a program there that will follow through on the integration these students are experiencing at Metz, expanding the Metz honors courses offerings to once again provide social studies and science honor courses. Those courses were removed from the curriculum at the beginning of the 2022-2023 school year. We could be giving more students an opportunity for voice and choice at Metz while ensuring that they would continue to have these opportunities at Osborne. That would be my recommendation if I had been asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Hansi?
Hi, good evening, Dr. Newman, Chairwoman Seberg, and School Board members. I am the integrated math and science teacher at Metz, and I apologize for reading off of this, but my time is limited. This isn't my style, but I will go on. I attended this last School Board session held on March 12th to specifically seek clarification along with any supporting data on decoupling the Metz IMS program. However, it was obvious from the presentation and subsequent inquiries from the School Board members that there was no plausible data that supports decoupling a successful program like IMS. Moreover, there is no feasible plan for how this is going to work, nor was one adequately proposed. When reviewing the presentation with respect to learning trajectories, it was unclear whether IMS cohorts would be divided by mathematical ability or how or when teachers will receive professional development to effectively implement the proposed curriculum change. I think it's important to keep IMS intact, as it does allow continuous gifted services for middle school students that is far more enriching than pullouts or push-ins by a single GT resource teacher. I may add, currently, there is no GT resource teacher at Metz. And whenever that person is hired, we are asking that one teacher to provide gifted services for more than 100 students with different disciplinary focuses. For our gifted and advanced students, IMS is a thriving program. To wit, there was a 100% pass rate in both algebra and geometry SOLs. Only one student failed the Science 8 SOL, which places the success rate for that at 96%. This is exemplary when one considers that the overall science SOL pass rate for the state of Virginia was only 62%. Given all the aforementioned facts and data, I believe the best option is to wait and collect meaningful data and information from Osborne prior to decoupling a program that is successful for our advanced and gifted population. In the meantime, an honors science curriculum for those seeking advanced science without the mathematical rigor of IMS can be incorporated, while we consider if the decoupling approach was successful at the high school level. To be equitable, we need to consider the needs of all students, and that includes our advanced and gifted population, student population. I didn't know if I would have time, but I do want to just include another data point or statistic here. So, for those that are concerned that IMS is not diverse, its population is reflective of the overall population at Metz. The majority of IMS students are Hispanic, followed by white, Asian, and African American. We have 92 students collectively in both IMS 7 and IMS 8, excluding the three that were exited out of the program.
Thank you, Ms. Hansi. If there's anything further that you wanted to add, you can email it to us. Thank you. Heather Grant.
Hi, good evening. My name is Heather Grant, and I've had the privilege of teaching in Manassas City Public Schools for almost 23 years. I've taught various math and science courses at Osborne High School, and currently teach general chemistry and integrated chemistry and advanced placement chemistry. Over 10 years ago, Janet Graham, an amazing educator, invited me to teach integrated physics algebra II in her newly established integrated math-science program, commonly referred to as IMS. Under her guidance, I received additional training about teaching advanced students with an integrated inquiry-based problem-solving approach. Excuse me. And over the years, the IMS program has changed and evolved, counter to some of my recommendations about separating algebra II and physics. But nonetheless, as it has changed, I've continued to use these strategies to teach the IMS chemistry course for the last five years. I respect my colleagues on the Advanced Steering Committee, appreciate their continued support, and recognize their roles as leaders in our school community to guide us in our decision-making about what's best for our students. I clearly recognize they have the best, the students' best interests at heart as they make decisions about how to open up opportunities for all students. To that end, last year, a decision was made to decouple the IMS courses at the high school level, dissolve the honors chemistry and honors biology courses, and offer integrated chemistry and integrated biology courses to any student wishing to study advanced science before pursuing advanced placement coursework. Over the last eight months, my fellow chemistry teacher and I have worked together to adapt to this change and continue to create a curriculum which supports a more diverse group of students. However, I do not support the decoupling of the IMS science and math courses at the middle school level for the upcoming school year without a clear, well-thought-out implementation plan. Establishing the integrated science courses at the high school level has resulted in no additional training or feedback for teachers of these courses. We have yet to establish additional metrics for evaluating the efficacy of the curriculum. No data about student success has been collected or analyzed. When it was explained that the courses were going to be decoupled, it was recognized that students with no previous IMS experience would need scaffolds put in place to help them rise to the level of the coursework. So, we high school teachers have been implementing changes using our best professional judgment, and while I appreciate the confidence and autonomy entrusted to us, I question the urgency to make changes at the middle school level without outlining a plan for implementing and monitoring the success of these changes. Thank you for listening to my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Next is LeAnn Best.
I'm a 35-year resident of Manassas City. Both of my children were educated by Manassas City Public Schools, and both excelled at Ivy League colleges. Personally, I served on the school's gifted and talented advisory committee for more than 10 years. So, I know something about the advanced placement program, and I'm a very strong advocate. I know the data. Students who take AP classes perform better in college even when their test scores are too low to qualify for college credit. The rigor of the course alone imparts critical thinking skills. Also, I know our history, which many here likely do not. For years, Osborne High School routinely ranked in the top 20 of the Challenge Index, an annual rating of DC-area high schools. Then one year, faced with a budget crunch, the School Board stopped paying for student AP exams. Test-taking plummeted, and so did our ranking. Turned out, the Challenge Index is fully based on the number of AP exams taken by a student body. The uproar was huge. Anyone in any school leadership position was forced into a community discussion about the quality of our schools. People cared deeply about having an excellent public school system. Fast forward to today. Imagine my horror when my daughter asked if Manassas City Public Schools really was scrapping our AP program. She heard about it on a podcast. It took me about two minutes to verify that not only is Manassas City Public Schools not jettisoning our AP program, but expanding it. Disgustedly, I listened to the podcast. A member of the Manassas City Public Schools Board sent an email alerting everyone in the Manassas City School District that AP courses at the only high school in the city are being scrapped. I am outraged. It is reprehensible that recent national leadership has normalized lying for personal profit and power. To have that happen here in my city, unfathomable. And to what end? What is the gain? After all, the podcast co-host who announced this lie was Stephen Kent, husband of a failed Manassas City School Board candidate who campaigned in partnership with a current sitting School Board member. Our city government is currently spending millions to upgrade Manassas. Our elected representatives are buying and rebuilding shopping centers, neighborhoods, a community center, to make Manassas more attractive to potential residents and businesses. One key lesson from the 2000s AP debacle is that public school quality is a key decision point for potential residents, and a happy population of local skilled workers is a decision point to any business considering relocation here. So, a shot to the heart of the confidence in the Manassas City Public School system is a shot to the heart of our overall city progress. Whoever sent that letter must retract it in every venue in which it was shared. Having listened to the IMS programs, the podcast clearly said AP programs at Osborne High School. After that, whoever sent that email needs to look in the mirror and question his or her own integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Watley.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Watley. I am the lead speech-language pathologist for Manassas City Public Schools. I have been with Manassas City since 1995. Yes, I'm that old. I am here to speak on behalf of the speech-language pathologists regarding our concerns with the proposed salary scale and the staffing allotments for the SLPs for the next school year. As you know, I've sent a letter on behalf of all the SLPs, and you've had an opportunity to read it. We serve 47% of the special education students in Manassas City Public Schools. 47% of those students receive speech and language services, currently being provided by 6.6 positions. We are understaffed, we are overworked, we are tired, and we need help. We have been attempting to fill unfilled SLP positions for a number of years, and our attempts to fill those positions with full-time employees have been unsuccessful. We've had very few applicants, and we've lost new hires to other school divisions because our salary scale is lower than what is being offered in other places. There is a discrepancy between the proposed licensed professional salary scale and the certified instructional scale for next year. We ask that the, our salaries on the new scale be reflective of the work that we do and be equivalent to what the teachers are receiving. This school year, the speech-language pathologists have covered in other buildings besides our base schools. Three SLPs have shared duties related to child find. Four of the SLPs have been assigned home-school students, and five SLPs have covered at the secondary schools. As a result, several of our caseloads have exceeded the maximum amount of 68 students. Being split between buildings to provide therapy services and complete other SLP duties limits our ability to effectively collaborate with our colleagues in our base schools as well as in other buildings. We lose critical instructional time while traveling between buildings for therapy and meetings. With our current SLP staffing shortage, we spend nearly all of our time at school providing required therapy services, completing screenings and evaluations, and attending meetings. Due to the lack of sufficient time during the school day, we have to complete required paperwork outside of our contract hours. This includes writing screening and evaluation reports, writing eligibility meeting minutes and IEPs, completing progress reports, and submitting daily therapy notes for Medicaid billing.
Thank you, Ms. Watley. If there was anything left of your speech, please email it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move along on our agenda tonight. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Oh, sorry. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for citizens' comments? Anyone at all? Okay.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas adopt the consent agenda as presented, approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Spall, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. New business tonight. We have an Autism Acceptance Month proclamation. And Vice Chair Stevens, will you lead us through that?
Sure.
Thank you, Chair Seberg. The City of Manassas Public Schools Autism Acceptance Month proclamation, dated today, March 21st, 2024, recognizing April 24th as Autism Acceptance Month. Autism Acceptance Month reflects a shift away from autism awareness with an understanding that acceptance requires the promotion of, inclusion of, and collaboration with autistic individuals in Manassas City Public Schools. Whereas autistic individuals are our community members, neighbors, students, coworkers, friends, and family. Whereas, many members of the autistic community prefer identity first to language, autistic person over first, person first language, person with autism. Whereas, autistic individuals are neither high nor low functioning, but have differing ways of processing and interacting with their environment and the people in it. Whereas, many autistic individuals do not see autism as an illness to be cured, but as a neurotype that is to be appreciated and accepted. Whereas, just like all people, there are no two autistic people who are exactly alike in their strengths, needs, and preferences. Whereas, autistic voices must be included in any discussion, decisions, and discussions related to their lives and experiences. Whereas, the infinity symbol best represents and celebrates the talents, skills, and achievements by autistic people that make MCPS a stronger, more vibrant school division. Therefore, be it resolved that the Manassas City School Board recognizes April 2024 as Autism Acceptance Month and celebrates the achievement of our autistic students and honors the efforts of their families to ensure autistic voices are heard and respected this month and every month throughout the year.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair, and thank you for including the School Board and staff in the construction of this, so everybody got their important points in.
Yeah, I made it a top priority to hear from autistic voices because those are the people who matter. They're at the center. Their voices are the most important voices we hear, and they need to have a say in everything we do that relates to their lives.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, we can move it along to the next agenda for action?
Yes, it will be in our April meeting on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Okay. Sure.
At the April meeting, we're not waiving second reading tonight because at the April meeting, there will be a presentation to celebrate Autism Acceptance Month. And so, we prefer waiting till then to couple the two together.
Thank you. Moving along to the action agenda. First up is personnel. The School Board annually approves the health insurance plans and premiums. The health insurance plans and premiums were discussed at the February 29th budget meeting. The premiums were discussed at the March 12th School Board meeting. And if there's no further questions or discussion, we can move it to motion.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY '25 insurance plans and premiums as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair, second by Mrs. Spall, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY '25 insurance plans and premiums as presented. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Finance and operations. Dr. Casada, Interim Director of Finance, presented the superintendent's proposed FY '24-25 budget on February 27th. The School Board approved the capital improvement plan in December. Dr. Casada provided the FY '25-29 five-year forecast at the February 29th Budget Work Session, and the five-year forecast amounts and assumptions have been updated based on the proposed operating budget for FY '25 to '29 and the CIP. The schedules summarize proposed budget amounts in accordance with the Code of Virginia and within the funds allocated by City Council of Manassas, Virginia. Dr. Casada, is there any other, anything?
No, I just wanted to make sure that the public here and watching are aware that the materials that Chair Seberg just referenced in terms of the presentation from last time and the five-year forecast and the summary are available on Board Docs, and everything will be available on the budget website. And after the budget, this version of the budget is approved and goes to the City Council, it is quite likely that we'll have to do some of this over again when we receive any additional funding from the state once the governor and the legislature come to agreement. And so, at such time, we would be back to discuss those things.
Sounds good. Can I get a motion?
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. And we had our last work session for the budget this past Tuesday night, and one of the things that was made clear in that discussion, that work session, was people over projects, that our top priority was and continues to be compensation and ensuring that we are within X percent of our surrounding jurisdictions and that we are working to ensure that our employees are competitively paid, correct?
Yes, that's definitely the summary of the meeting the other night.
Okay, thank you.
No motion.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY '24-25 budget as presented in the amount of $152,855,129 that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the 2025 capital improvement plan, known as the CIP, on December 12th, 2023, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve FY '25 to '29 five-year forecast as presented, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit these schedules to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board policy and Virginia State Code.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spall, second by Vice Chair Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY '24-25 budget as presented in the amount of $152,855,129, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the 2025 capital improvement plan on December 12th, 2023, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the FY '25-29 five-year forecast as presented and authorized the School Board Chairman to transmit these schedules to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with School Board policy and Virginia State Code. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, we have School Board members' comments. And I will go first to Ms. Island. Thank you for joining us at the table today.
Thank you, it's nice to be here. I just wanted to wish everyone a great relaxing spring break with the thumb, the third mark being coming to a close. And I'd like to wish everyone a prosperous and successful final quarter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Island. Mrs. Bresia.
Thank you very much. Also, a prosperous end to the third quarter to everybody. I also want to highlight some of the things in the budget this year that I'm excited about. I'm excited about the additional security personnel coming to Metz. I'm excited about the additional attendance personnel being onboarded at the division level. And although this budget cannot be, no budget can ever be all things to all people, I think that we're working together in the right way. I really appreciated the prioritization exercise that we did over last year's retreat. I think that really helped us through this process. I look forward to doing that again. And I would like to briefly address a comment that was made earlier today regarding the advanced placement courses at Osborne. It is true that I have a newsletter that I send out to my various constituencies, open to anybody who would like to add themselves to that list. And on March 25th, 2023, this is what I said. "MCPS staff has proposed several changes to the Osborne course catalog for next year. The most significant and controversial change is an elimination of honors courses in subjects where advanced placement courses exist. Administrative staff has described this change as an opportunity to enhance the overall rigor of our..." of our upper-level coursework and to encourage more students to challenge themselves by taking AP courses. We currently lag both Manassas Park and Prince William in the share of students taking AP classes as well as AP exam test results. I have my concerns about this creating an incentive to dilute AP class rigor in the future and also worry about causing current Honors Class enrollees to step down to regular courses rather than to step up to AP courses. However, I am inclined to support this, as on balance, I believe this will help to create a student, a student expectation of reaching for higher academic achievement, and it will enhance our teachers' ability to plan distinct and more rigorous coursework overall. As an administrative audit of our upper-level courses did not show much meaningful distinction between our current regular Honors and AP levels. This change would also put us in line with other, other school systems in our region. If you have thoughts on this, I encourage you to get in touch." So, I do regret the comments made by a different person in a different venue, but the newsletter as described was never sent, and anybody who is inclined to get the fax is encouraged to sign up for my newsletter, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bresja. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Chair Seberg, and I echo Ms. Bresja's comments about the budget, every single word, so thank you. I would like to first announce that Osborne High School has a job and internship fair Monday, April 29, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. in the OHS Library. We are looking for businesses who would like a table at this event to have students explore what options and careers that may be out there if you do need an internship. It's a great way to meet some students, and what we're specifically proud of is the care that our CTE program has taken to prepare our students for these fairs. So I would highly encourage anyone to please sign up. There is a flyer going around with a QR code. You can email ericgodwin@egodwin, G-O-D-W-I-N, at mcpsova.org to sign up and register for a table. I think, I truly believe our students now are our future leaders, and it's our job as a community to help support that. Since I've been on the board, this school system has put a lot of investment, a lot of money, a lot of time, and a lot of effort to improve upon our CTE program, and it really does take the support from community partnerships, and the current partnerships we have, we are so thankful for, and I'd encourage more. I'd also, I know I said this last time, but as students prepare for spring break, I want to remind them again, there are so many scholarship opportunities. Please check your email, please go on the Career Center's, I don't know what you guys call it, Blackboard webpage for scholarship opportunities. There are still many out there, and again, I'd hate to leave money on the table. And now that being said, happy spring break. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Spald?
Yes, just briefly. Citizens, if you're approached this season to sign petitions for candidacy for local office for this election season, please include in your conversations that well-funded and high-performing schools must be a top priority in the upcoming Manassas vision. We need the support of the public, the council, the families, and new board members to perform our jobs in the manner we believe our city and our children deserve. We can make great strides if everyone is pulling in the same direction, and new candidates and old alike need to be reminded early and often that our schools must be a priority. Thank you. Happy spring break.
Thank you, Mrs. Spald. Vice Chair Stevens?
First, I'd like to echo what Ms. Spald said. I think that was perfectly spot-on. This isn't a big an election cycle, so please make sure, every candidate you see, every candidate you run across, remind them the importance of public education, because our students today are tomorrow's leaders. I have to say something about somebody in the audience tonight. I saw you, and I realized who you were. I have a 21-year-old who did receive speech services when he was in elementary school, and, uh-huh, and that child of mine said that you were never allowed to get married because he was going to marry you when he grew up. So it was just that memory, and it was so funny, and the impact, you know, everyone has on our students, and for my son, graduation from speech services was bittersweet, because it was great that he didn't need them anymore, but at the same time, it was really sad to see the end of a relationship. Because one of the cool things about our Speech Language Pathologists is they don't have a one-year relationship with our students, they can have a multi-year relationship with our students, and they create a very close bond, and it was a really close bond that my son had, and I know he treasured those moments, and that really made his elementary years that much better. So thank you for what you did and what you continue to do. I know it's a very teary-eyed moment, and I didn't even think about it, but there it is, and normally we don't engage in conversation, but I'm sorry, I just had to say that. Spring break is right around the corner. I know we all get these big to-do lists going on, but sometimes the most important thing to go on your to-do list is to sit down and relax and put your feet up. If you have the time off, teachers, everybody who works in schools, take a day for yourself. Put everybody else aside, put everything else aside, put all that work, that to-do list that you have, I know I have one, put that to-do list to the side. Wear your pajamas all day, drink coffee all day, read a good book, take a minute for yourself, you need it, you deserve it, and so do your kids. So have a safe spring break, and we'll see you in a month.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and I have a little story. I was at a store last week, and I ran into a Manassas City Public Schools parent. We don't know each other well, but we probably know each other's kids better than the adults, and we have a, an appreciation for the activities that they do. She mentioned that she recently read a post on social media forum that said some derogatory things about Manassas City School, just basically name-calling with no content or no context. She said that really bothered her, but she didn't want to engage with an unknown person online. You know, these negative comments are what the troll and social media platforms count on. They thrive on it. Her family has had such a wonderful experience with Manassas City Schools and are so appreciative to the teachers and staff, again, talking about relationships. She recognizes that the experience they've had in our schools, the thanks to the teachers, the coursework, the friends and activities her children are thriving. She goes on, they go on to greater things after they get out of school with us, but we were talking about they have an appreciation for home and for our city, and I basically want to say, ignore the trolls, let's share the best-kept secret, Manassas City Public Schools and the City of Manassas. Now, if you do have a valid concern and need to address it, I encourage you to address it at the school level first. Give staff the opportunity to correct the situation, whatever it is. Everyone has the power to ask and expect an answer. No one should feel like they have to go through a school board member just to get a problem solved. But when lies and misinformation are spread, it hurts our current, our former, and our future students and staff. It hurts our city. Don't be a part of it. Ask questions, keep asking for answers, and stay informed. All right, now something fun. After Prom. After Prom, it is an event that is held after prom. They keep students entertained, fed, and having fun after prom. It is a unique opportunity for our juniors and seniors, and I'm very pleased that the Osborne High School PTSA has been working to continue this awesome tradition, because it takes a great deal of effort and work to carry it out. It's been very popular over the years with students, and it's very exhausting for parents, community members, and staff to support it, but it is also extremely rewarding to know that every student can come home safely after prom and then sleep all day. So drop a check to OHS PTSA, and note "After Prom" on it. Watch for requests for time, food, and supplies on their Facebook page, which is Osborne High School PTSA. Happy spring break, whether it's a parade at Disney World or the TV on the couch. I hope that you will include a good book and have some fun, yet relaxing, restorative, good time. Thank you. Anything you want to say?
Go ahead.
Sorry, we've posted information about the upcoming selection of School Board Representatives. Those applications are due the 5th of April, so if you know of anyone that you think might be a good candidate, we've done a really great job picking very active and well-informed students, so we'd like to continue that tradition. Thank you.
Chair, I move that the School Board meeting adjourn.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Spald, that the School Board meeting adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.